Good evening. Called order the City of Mason Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 12th, 2015. Could we roll call, please?
Commissioner Barna.
Here.
Commissioner Brown, Mayor Pro Tem Brown. Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Hagel. Commissioner Hude.
Here.
Chairperson Reiser.
Here.
Vice Chair Sabatin.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
And Secretary Waxman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And for the record, Commissioner Hagel gave notice, Mayor Pro Tem Brown should be here shortly. Commissioners, before you've got the minutes to last month's meeting, any corrections, changes, or additions that should be with those minutes? If there are none, I'll accept the motion to accept as written.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move to accept the minutes of April 14th, 2015, as presented.
May I second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity for people from the public to discuss any topic related to Planning Commission. Having no one in our galley this evening, we will move right along to announcements. Commissioners, any announcements? No announcements, all right. Moving right along, regular business. Tonight's regular business is, first topic is a report on the Medical Marijuana Ordinance Subcommittee activity. Mr. Haywood, would you kind of give us an overview, and then we'll see which commissioners in that committee would like to join in? Good evening, Mr. Brown.
Sure, thank you. The Medical Marijuana Ordinance Committee last met, well, actually, we're meeting tonight, and at our last meeting, we discussed a variety of issues and kind of identified a structure for moving forward with developing a draft ordinance. And we identified several areas to explore, that being ordinance examples. We'd like a little bit of background information from what's happening in Colorado to understand how a widespread acceptance of the issue can affect social issues, or, you know, any kind of revenue from taxation and those kinds of things, like the broad range of issues that might help us understand how usage in the community, what kind of impacts there might be. Also, want to coordinate with our neighboring townships to see how they're addressing the issue. Would like to pursue public input and give a presentation to the public about where we've been with this issue, what we know, and where we're headed. Would like to conduct a public survey. Would like to include a map of schools so that we can understand where our facilities that house vulnerable populations are, so that being, you know, kind of considerations with proximity to land uses that allow medical marijuana. And also develop, which we have done, a list of stakeholders for a focus group to be able to key in on those folks that are kind of in tune with the issue, or would most likely want to be involved to address them directly. We're also exploring statistics about the number of registered patients and caregivers in the state and the county, and then that compared to Mason. There, I don't think there are statistics available specifically for Mason, but you can kind of extrapolate from what's happening in the county and make some assumptions based on the percentages of the population holding registration cards in the county. So that's kind of where we're at in a nutshell. We're going to speak tonight a little bit about some of the materials that we have available to us and kind of start to refine our approach to involving the public and perhaps start setting a schedule for that. Also included in your packet is a very basic outline for a presentation to the community to get them up to speed on where we're at, kind of what's legal, significant Michigan court cases that have defined the landscape of medical marijuana. Address any pending legislation. There are several bills out there right now at the state legislature that would change the landscape of marijuana in the state. Explore and understand the statistics that we talked about, and then kind of lay out issues to consider and identify those, let the community know what the Planning Commission and the city council have already identified as relevant issues that we'd like to explore and/or get their input on, and then kind of open it up for discussion and input at that point. So kind of lay it out for them, get them, get all on the same page, and then talk about those issues. So that's kind of where we're at and where we're headed, and with that, I guess I'll take any questions or comments.
Commissioners, any comments, questions, or even the subcommittee members feel free to chime right in with what David has had to say. It does look like you guys have been very thorough so far, and that looks very good. Anybody have comments? David, you got a question for yourself?
No, I do have one last comment. If there are no questions or comments, I do want to let you know that the current moratorium on our existing ordinance is expiring this Saturday. So on Monday nights, city council, city council meeting, we need to establish another moratorium for that purpose. And I would recommend for there to be positive linkage between the Planning Commission and city council, that we make a recommendation to the council to do just that. I've already really, I've already prepared the resolution and the staff agenda report to council, but a confirmation from the Planning Commission for them to move in that direction would be advisable at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Waxman.
So this brings up a very good point. We have, we have an ordinance on the books that is under a moratorium that's up to be renewed, under a moratorium. The ordinance really is not applicable at this time based on current court rulings. And I guess my thought is that we have an ordinance that isn't enforceable because it's not constitutional, so why do we need a moratorium on an ordinance, and why shouldn't we just recommend repeal of that ordinance and then continue exploring a future ordinance? Because it seems to me that even if, even if we're trying to regulate caregivers, it's almost impossible to do. It requires them to self-report, requires them, and it requires the law enforcement departments to follow through on checking out on that. It's almost, it's almost like our fireworks ordinance, which is unenforceable. You know, I mean, somebody gets a complaint, you go try to find those people lighting off fireworks, good luck. So I don't know that a moratorium does, other than to hold this current ordinance in place, does anything for us because it's going to have to be rewritten anyway. Thank you.
The, the current ordinance, you're correct in the sense that it's not really applicable in the sense that it would permit dispensaries, and dispensaries have been deemed illegal under, under the current act. So in that sense, you're correct. However, if we were to repeal the current ordinance without replacing it with one, then it basically leaves the issue unregulated, and those land uses could pop up anywhere without us having any real enforceability on their location, or severity, or that kind of thing, so we wouldn't really have any, any regulatory effect in that, you know, we wouldn't have any standing to order them to do anything without an ordinance in place that would tell us how to regulate them. So in that sense, you know, we need to have something on record, some regulatory mechanism on record, and then the moratorium basically puts a halt to anything new being created under that ordinance, or anything related to the issue. So in that sense, we kind of are able to, you know, push the pause button and effectively get a regulation that's, you know, community-based and covers all the issues that are, that are relevant to the community, and, and then repeal the ordinance and replace it with one that, that we can all kind of live with. Hope that, does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, it does, and I'm just curious, I read an article around a couple weeks ago, and a lot of the details are fuzzy, but something similar occurred in Flint, I believe, and they finally passed some type of ordinance. So I'd like to see if we could get some of that information in front of us as well. I know it's not demographically and population-wise the same, but regulatory systems are regulatory systems, so if we're going to continue down this path, I guess we should take a look at what other Michigan communities are doing rather than what Colorado's doing. Because even if the state passes, even if the people of this state decide to pass something to decriminalize or legalize, the regulation of that is going to happen at our level, and it's going to be different from Colorado's in many ways, so.
Well, also, if I remember, if I could just interject, is that when the attorney was with us, the city attorney, that if we did go ahead, because we are doing, we have the subcommittee and the work is being done, that the, you know, the moratorium extending that, we're well within grounds to continue forward. Yes, we do need to get a different ordinance eventually, but as long as we're doing this legwork, getting prepared for it, that we were fine, at least like David said, nothing can branch up in a lapse of ordinances. So that's what I remember getting from the city attorney's perspective, so. Commissioner Barna, you had something to add to?
Yeah, at our last Medical Marijuana Subcommittee meeting, we discussed, and spent a while, but we did review a number of ordinances from other Michigan communities. Grand Rapids is one of them. Well, East Lansing is very similar to ours, and there was a small town that I can't, sorry with an M, that I can't remember the name of. I don't have my materials with me, but, so we have been looking at Michigan. I think the, the issue with Colorado is that it gives us a window into the future, not that we would be looking to model or anything after Colorado law, because that's different, but it kind of gives us an idea of what are the, some of the issues that arise that people, they're kind of, essentially, they're one of the first states to legalize, and so that gives us some concepts as a community of what might be some of the consequences of that, of that action, which is probably going to happen. It's just, and so for our sakes, we can take some of those lessons and say, well, what are the, some of the things they didn't think about in Colorado that we can think about. The other thing is that this notion of the, the ordinance not being applicable, there's still an issue of the caregiver. Caregivers are people that grow marijuana for someone else, and those folks can have, I believe, up to 72 plants in their home or place of business that they're doing a caregiver operation. And so those are folks that, that potentially, they're using their property in a way that could potentially be harmful if they're, depending on how they're operating their business. So is it unenforceable? I don't know, but at least it certainly would be, if the ordinance were to go into effect, it would have an effect because those, those caregivers would be required to be registered. Would they register? I don't know, but it certainly would give the city another, another thing to look at if they did run into a problem with someone operating a caregiver business, and if they weren't registered, it would, you know, it would be another thing that the law enforcement folks would be able to examine and potentially, you know, shut them down if they're not operating lawfully. If they're operating lawfully, then fine, but, so, you know, I don't know. I mean, I feel like if, as far as, do we need to do a moratorium? You know, if the, if the ordinance goes into effect, okay, you know, I mean, that's my opinion is, okay, so the ordinance goes into effect, and caregivers then are required to be registered, that doesn't bother me. I wouldn't say that we should repeal the ordinance, though, that we have, until we have something to replace it with. But, so that's my opinion, based on my, you know, on the conversation as a Medical Marijuana Subcommittee member, participant, based on our review of the ordinances that I've seen. I think there are really some great concepts that we can use from Grand Rapids and some from other Michigan communities, but we need probably another few months, and we want to incorporate the input from the city residents in order to make that happen.
Thank you. David?
Just one more comment on the issue of a moratorium. One of the fundamental questions that a moratorium allows us time to answer is where should these uses, land uses be permitted in our community? The current ordinance really isn't specific to where these should be permitted, so it gives us time to consider the impacts of our business, its location, what the impact might be on, on the surrounding vicinity, if, if anything. So I guess that gives us time to, to look into that a little deeper, to see how the community is going to respond to possibly examples of where they might be, or that kind of thing, and get their, get their feel for the level of comfort for location-specific businesses, so that'll give us time to research that. But otherwise, otherwise, yes, I mean, the, the current ordinance would, portions of it would be enforceable, but portions of it wouldn't, because it specifically mentions dispensaries, which are not a legal activity in Michigan currently. So from that perspective, we couldn't allow dispensaries, so it would be confusing for sure, but portions of it would be enforceable, but, you know, I, from an administrative perspective, I don't like being in the boat of having an ordinance in effect that says one thing but legally isn't allowed another way, and kind of have to deal with those ambiguity in the, in the ordinance, for lack of a better word. Before I forget, on this whole issue of exploring, doing some research, I'd like to introduce a planning intern that we have in my department, Thomas Gerdwood. He's an MSU student and is going to be helping me through a good portion of the summer, and specifically has started work on this issue already in the last couple days, so starting to pull together some ordinance examples and doing some of the research. So it'll be a welcome addition to having a little bit of extra help in the office, so he will be joining us tonight, so welcome, Thomas. Thank you.
Welcome, Thomas. Thanks for being here this evening. Okay, David, then for going forward, do we need to have a motion to request city council to go forward with the, the moratorium to give us more time at this time? If this commissioner would like to make a motion requesting city council to extend the moratorium?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, I move to make the recommendation, that staff make the recommendation to extend the moratorium for 180 days to allow the Planning Commission more time to examine the issue.
Seconded. I move and seconded to request, or have staff request city council to extend the moratorium for 180 days. Any questions, comments to that motion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Great, thank you very much. Next item on our regular business is the report from our second subarea planning, or Subcommittee, the subarea planning activity. Mr. Haywood, would you like to give us an overview on that?
Sure, thank you. This again involves the planning areas of the Cedar Street Interchange and the Fairgrounds, East Buffer Area, and Airport planning areas. Purpose of the committee is to explore the future functionality of these areas, kind of the feel for how this should develop, the, the level of density, the performance criteria, any standards for development in terms of access of road connections, street layouts, all kinds of different issues to consider. And so what we would like to do is move forward with some public input sessions with key stakeholders, adjacent property owners, agencies that might have an interest in traffic circulation, environmental issues, all kinds of things, and try to involve them, get them at the table, and get an understanding of where we would like to head with these properties. We're starting to see a little bit of interest in speculation on some of these properties, so it'd be good to include as many of those folks as well, but just try to get an understanding of how we'd like to see these areas perform in the future, so that we can give prospective developers clear direction and a clear understanding of the product that we'd like to see at the end. So we're, what we're currently looking at is, we have, the last time we met was April 28th. We've refined the stakeholder list to make sure that we include all of those people who might have an interest, including neighborhood, neighborhoods that might experience cut-through traffic if areas are developed with higher density residential. And also, the process for creating a subarea plan is the same as if you were creating a new plan. So we have to do a notice of intent to plan, and then, you know, create your timeline for involving the public, public hearings and that kind of thing, so it's a similar process. We'll be condensing the timeline a little bit, since it's not incorporating the entire city, just a few areas. We're looking at sending out our notice of intent to plan the first week of June, and inviting stakeholder, stakeholders to meet in mid-June for public hearing, or not public hearing, but public input meetings. So we're kind of looking at that timeframe, trying to get past the school year, trying to get past the holiday, and into kind of a settled-in summer schedule, so that's kind of where we're at with that process, and look forward to keeping you in tune as we move forward.
Great, thank you, David. Commissioners, any comments, questions for Mr. Haywood, or if there's any of the subcommittee members that would like to chime in on what David had to say? Everybody has so much to say, nobody knows who to raise their hand first, so we'll move right along. Thank you, David. And I just want to make a, a point to say thank you to both subcommittees. You know, obviously, you're spending time on this and taking it very seriously, and your efforts are greatly appreciated, so thank you much for your time. Item number seven is unfinished business. Commissioners, any unfinished business? Having none? New business? Commissioners, anything new? Having none? Any correspondence? Liaison reports. Mayor Pro Tem Brown, tell us what's going on with city council, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things to share, excuse me, with the commission tonight. The city council is currently going through the budget process for fiscal year 2015, 2016. At our last meeting on May 6th, the council held a public hearing on the proposed budget. Several members came out and participated in that public hearing, and the council is slated to take final action on next year's budget on our next meeting, which will be Monday, May 18th. By charter, we actually have to approve the budget at the second meeting in May, so we will take some action of finality on the budget at that meeting. And so I encourage you to, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, you can review a copy of the budget here at City Hall. There are also copies of the proposed budget on the website, especially in our May 6th agenda packet, and also I have a copy that's available on my website. You can just go and, and see all the different documents that we've been discussing throughout the past several weeks. And even if you weren't able to attend the public hearing and, and share some input, you can still do that by contacting your council members, and certainly we take all of the comments into consideration up until the final vote on the budget. Additionally to that, the city council passed ordinance number 199, which you will recall is the Dart Bank rezoning. We had the first and second reading of that over our past two meetings, and voted to approve that ordinance. And so thank you to the Planning Commission for your work on that, especially doing the heavy lifting with conducting that public hearing as well. Another item that the council took up at its last meeting was a resolution designating last week as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Mason, and basically giving a formal thank you to all of those that serve in our community, whether you're a city employee or even individuals like yourselves who volunteer your time to serve the community. All of us are public servants, and there are several organizations at a national level that participate in Public Service Recognition Week, and so we wanted to localize it and basically take an opportunity to thank all individuals who not only work for this city but serve in, in a variety of capacities. So thank you for all of your service as well. And finally, over the past two meetings, the council has had several discussions regarding the, the idea of food trucks in the city. At our April 20th meeting, there was a particular request by Bad Brewing Company to park their food truck operation on the public right-of-way on Jefferson, and to do that for an extended period of time during the day and for several days of the week. So the council had a very extensive discussion about this particular request and about the larger issue of how food trucks should operate within the city. And so while that particular request was not granted by the council, we did ask city administration to begin drafting a policy and a proposed food truck ordinance, and to involve various stakeholders, including the Planning Commission, as well as the Historic District Commission, the Chamber, and some of our other businesses, the DDA as well. And so I bring this to light because a lot of cities currently have food trucks in operations, they have different ways of looking at it, and so from a planning perspective, I definitely think it's important for this body to take a look at it at a, at a future meeting, and maybe to at least have a discussion and share some thoughts that we can then contemplate at the, at the council level as we decide whether or not to pursue a policy ordinance. So I encourage all of you to, to kind of look at the issue on your own, and maybe at a future meeting, maybe David will, will bring it before us. I don't want to jump the gun, because I know administration is working through, working through the creation of an ordinance, but just something to put on your radar, something that we would like to look at and see whether or not it's appropriate for Mason, and if it is, how we can make it fit within our community. That's all that we've discussed over the past two months. It's a gracious plenty, and I'm happy to take any questions or hear any comments or concerns that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brown. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Barna?
Commissioner Brown, I would just encourage you to include the Ingham County Health Department, Environmental Health Division in your list of stakeholders, if you haven't already, as the entity that regulates food service providers. I think that they would probably have quite a bit to share about the food safety experience with food trucks, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments? David?
And I'm not sure when to disclose this, but I have a conflict of interest with the current food trucks, so that's why I haven't brought the, brought the issue forward to you. Since we have, my wife and I own a farm outside of the city, we provide and sell produce and product to, directly to the food truck in Mason, Goodbyts. So I figure I have to disclose that. We do have a monetary interest in, in that operation, so I have to recuse myself from the lead on this. the lead on this. I mean, I certainly will provide comment when it's appropriate, but it being lead, directing the, kind of directing the ship on that when I have to accuse myself from that, so it would be assigned to other staff. I think it's assigned to the city clerk, but, but we'll proceed forward as we go, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Well, great. Now we know why Good Bites food tastes so good, so Dev will just rely on you to, when staff has, or city administrator is prepared to have all that due diligence done to present it to us, then we can discuss it from there. And so I guess what we're, long story short, is expected on our agenda sometime in the near future. So, great. Any other comments or questions for Mayor Pro Tem Brown? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Director's report. David, tell us what you haven't shared with us already.
It's always hard to do on my director's report. After everything we've discussed in regular business and Mayor Pro Tem, it's hard to, hard to scrounge up a few things to talk about. But I will announce that we did receive bids back from the contractors that bid on the pedestrian bridge. The, the low bid was actually significantly lower than the engineer's estimate, so that's a really welcome, welcome number. However, they've not, not been validated yet, so we're still in the process of reviewing the proposal. They were open this morning, so we're still reviewing those to make sure that all the math is correct and all the necessary documents are in place, so, before we can announce a timeline. But I did want to let you know that the bids were open, and they looked pretty good so far, so we'll continue to proceed and let you know how it goes as we move forward. And just a real brief update on the adaptive reuse, 124, 140, the Oracle building. They are proceeding forward and are racing for the finish line. They're shooting for July 4th opening. Not, I don't know if they're going to have an opening on that day, but roughly that week. They want to be substantially complete by, by the, the holiday, so that's what they're targeting, and we're doing everything we can do to help them get there. So I guess that's about all I have to report tonight.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments, questions for David? Commissioner?
A quick question. Is it, on the bridge, do we do a low bid or best value?
I guess a little of both. We don't hardline that to a, to a low bid, so if there's something in their bid that we don't like, you know, we can go to the next one if, if there's an issue. But the, the low bidder was Reith Riley. They installed, constructed and installed the, the bridge at the north end of the cemetery, so they're not only practiced in installing that specific improvement, but in the location too, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Folks, thank you very much for your time this evening and your service and dedication to the city. We are adjourned.